Good morning, everyone. It is eight thirty-one on Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three. This is a special school board meeting of the Oaks Public Schools Board. And we're meeting in the Oaks Public Schools Central Office Conference Room. All board members are in the room. Superintendent Self, Business Manager Jepson, and several staff members. Joining us online are Todd Rapp, Chad Kupfer, and Lori Christensen. So with that, we're called to order. We'll start to say the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Already mentioned with this meeting, this is a special meeting, so we cannot make any changes to the agenda, so we will move into item number two. Items for discussion and possible action. A, facilities update.
Okay, if you're okay with it, we have been doing survey results as long as they're here.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Item B, ICS.
Hi Lori, we're ready for you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, I know you guys had a, had a long morning. We have, so today what we wanted to do is just bring back the survey results. So we have had those out and have our team, I have Todd Rapp with us. Do you guys have the presentation? Can we?
We do. I, I might have my computer before it got sent here.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so excellent. So thank you, Todd, for doing that. If you go to the next slide, so the, this is there we go. So here's our team. So you have met myself and Kirk. But we also on our team, we have Todd Rapp here today. And he's gonna actually, he helped us develop the survey and will be bringing back the results. And he analyzed them and, and will be presenting today. Along with Erin Sorenson, she's also on our team too when it comes to communication and public input. So this was, who's been kind of working on in the background to help get this prepared for the district. And so just want to kind of recognize them. And then I'm gonna, I'm just gonna introduce Todd, but I'm gonna let him actually give a background, because he, he is actually a company that we partner with. And we have recognized the huge value that Todd brings to our teams and when it comes to public communication and, and strategy. So with that, Todd, I'll let you give some background and then I'm just gonna hand it off to you and let you walk through the results.
Okay, thanks Lori. It's nice to meet all of you virtually here. As Lori said, I own a strategic communications company. One of the specialties that we have is we work with school districts, cities and counties on, on building projects, but specifically, we tend to focus more on those projects where they need a referendum to get public support for funding. As of the end of this year, we will, will have worked on more than a hundred of these. And I would say in a little bit more than half of these, we've used opinion research to try to help understand where your residents are, but also in an attempt to try to time when's the best time to go out. And by that I mean is that, what I mean is that typically speaking, in a referendum election, the, the question here isn't whether or not every voter goes out and looks at the plan in great detail and decides yes or no, whether they like it. It's obviously important for them to understand the details of the plan and for them to feel like the plan provides good value. But, but we've really found that there is an awareness of the need and then a confidence in the district's planning that really drives overall referendum support. And I'll show you some data based on some questions that we ask in, in every school district that will help, I hope, inform you of, of, of the conclusions that we're drawing about where you are in the process. And the good news is that it, there's a lot of good positive signs here. But there's a couple of warning signs that I at least want to put in front of you, give you a chance to think about, ask questions about that may help with your decision-making, particularly on the timing of a referendum. So for this, we used an online survey tool called Survey Monkey. And I'm sure you, you read more than enough about, about more traditional polling. The traditional telephone polling that uses both landline and, and cellular phones tends to be more accurate because it brings out a better, a more accurate demographic. You can control for factors like age or education or gender and so on. When we use an online survey tool, the good news is that it's less expensive. In it, but in addition to that, what it means is that the sample is self-selected. So you certainly cannot guarantee that it's a demographically accurate representation of your school district. However, we tend to look at these not in terms of the overall data, but rather in terms of the information it gives us on two subgroups. The parents of schoolchildren in your district and the non-parents. The reasons why we divide it that way is that when you go out for a referendum, parents and your staff really become the drivers of success of a referendum. They lead the momentum for a yes vote. Non-parents, you need to have an adequate number of votes, but you need to be well over sixty percent for parents and you can be comfortable being under sixty percent somewhat for non-parents if you want to succeed under North Dakota law. So that's really what we're gonna do is we're gonna break down this and I'm not gonna show you necessarily the entire sample. I'm gonna show you the non-parents and the parents. You can kind of compare those, those numbers. One final thing is that two hundred fifty-four individuals started the survey. We lost some of them at the end of what we call the atmospheric questions. We lost others as we got through the tax-related questions. So what, two hundred and one people completed the whole survey. But we're gonna show you all of the results that we received, so there will be a few more people who answered the questions on the atmospherics than answered the tax-related questions. One more just reminder for you, as you go out for a referendum, there's a clear relationship between people's knowledge and comfort with the schools and how things are managed with the support for the referendum. And we, we know that people's knowledge of schools precedes their decision to support a referendum. So there's kind of a ready-to-go area here where there's a high amount of knowledge of the schools and the plan, funding and so on, that drives the support. We don't think you're quite in the red circle yet. We think you're heading towards that and with additional communication and engagement of your community, I think you can get there where you're ready to go and see if you can get the sixty percent number. We're not quite along the way and really the data you're about to see is gonna define that. So I've broken down the survey results into three basic questions. Do residents believe there's a need for new investments? Do they have faith in district decision-making? And do they agree the plan offers good value? None of the numbers you see here are static, right? They're always changing based on people's opinions. And sometimes those opinions aren't very deep, so numbers can move. But in particularly, the numbers would improve or worsen based on decisions that you make, implementation issues, and how you communicate with your residents. So the first area, do residents, and I'm kind of going through this as if I'll present all of the data and then we'll have questions. But if for some reason somebody wants to stop on a slide, please jump in. I can't tell if anybody's asking to jump in. So just, just speak up and let, let me know that you have a question on a particular slide. So this, this slide is about do residents believe there's a need for new investments? We first asked a question on the current quality of the buildings. And I would say there's, the good news here is that I think both parents and non-parents see that there's a need. Okay, forty-five percent of parents said the buildings are excellent or good, fifty percent said fair or poor. Fifty percent of non-parents said the buildings are excellent or good, forty-five percent said fair or poor. And with the comments we received in the survey, we heard that there's an understanding that there's older buildings that lack some of the modern elements that you would expect in schools, maybe in other parts of the state. Okay, those numbers indicate that there's at least a willingness to listen to the fact that the quality of the buildings need to improve. But then we asked whether or not you believe that, that they can provide high-quality education. And seventy-two percent of parents agreed that your school can and seventy-two percent also of non-parents agree that it can. You note some difference in those in the intensity, which is whether they agree strongly or, or they just, they say they agree. With seventy-two percent of residents saying that they can still provide high-quality education, there's, tends to be an understanding that the schools are good enough. And now the bar is just a little bit higher in order to demonstrate to them that investments would have value. Finally, we asked whether or not the school can provide healthy and safe facilities. And seventy-four percent of the parents thought that these were healthy and safe spaces and eighty-six percent of the non-parents. This question tends to suggest whether or not people would consider this to be a critical or urgent problem. And if they, if they don't, they may still vote for the plan based on its value. But it certainly helps if people believe there's a level of urgency. And with numbers like seventy-four percent saying that it can provide healthy and safe spaces among parents and eighty-six percent among non-parents, it demonstrates that there's going to be, have to be a little bit more education here as to the reasons why these investments are important to give us students a better learning space. The second area we ask is whether or not people have faith in district decision-making. And, and it was about ten years ago when one of the things we learned about referendum voting is that it's not specifically about every detail of the plan. But rather, one of the best predictors of whether or not people will support a referendum is how they answer three different questions. First, whether district decisions are made in the best interest of students and staff. Second, if they, if you do a good job of managing finances and tax dollars. And third, whether or not people listen carefully, or whether we, the district listens carefully to people like me. If someone says yes, that they agree to all three of these, we have found consistently there's better than a ninety percent chance of them voting on a referendum. And we found that out both in, in pre-test questions, that is, we asked before referendum occurs, and in post-test, which is after the referendum, going back and asking people what they did. So on the first question on decision-making, fifty-five percent of parents agreed and fifty-seven percent of non-parents agreed you make decisions in the best interest of students and staff. Now, if you go down each column, you'll know if they don't add up to a hundred percent. And that's because a lot of people said don't know. That's actually good in this case, because if they receive more information, they're more likely to say, okay, I agree with that statement, than maybe somebody already says they disagree or particularly they say they disagree strongly. But on the other hand, you're gonna find out these questions that the non-parents are actually providing more positive responses than the parents. That's a warning sign you're not quite ready yet. Is, and in all cases here, you look at the good job of managing finances and tax dollars in the middle, that's forty-one and forty-nine percent positive. Listen carefully to people like me, it's thirty-eight and forty-five percent. In none of these, do you have at least sixty percent agreement with the question. So it is very likely, obviously, that across the board, number of people who say all three they agree with is gonna be significantly below whatever any one of the individual questions provides. This is not a fatal barrier to any referendum. What it just demonstrates is that people haven't quite followed, aren't connected to the decision-making that you've made up until now, not about the referendum itself, but just the ordinary daily or weekly or monthly decisions that a school district makes that improve the lives of students and staff, manage tax dollars well, or demonstrate that you're listening to others. This is certainly some results you can overcome, but it takes a little bit of time and you need to build that into ordinary communication. Finally, we have several slides here on the question of good value. One of the most positive things that came out of the survey was that the parents and the non-parents agreed on what should be the highest priorities for investments. And that is the HVAC, the plumbing, the fire protection, and making sure there's accessible bathrooms. It's not to say that they would not, that they would oppose a plan that had some of these other areas that we tested. But as long as the first four look like they're, they're in front, the foremost parts of the plan, certainly you'd get support on a plan that was broader than that. The key here is that if they hear about these four that were highlighted, HVAC, plumbing, fire protection, accessible bathrooms, they're more likely to agree that you selected a plan that has the highest value. Where if you're emphasizing some of the ones from the next row, it's gonna be harder to convince them that you picked the plan that has the highest value. This is pretty good news, this alignment. Then we asked two questions about the level of tax support. We've got a very general question that we asked that may seem, at, at times I think it may seem a little bit naive. What we asked them is that, would you say that you would typically vote for nearly any tax increase that supports schools? That you would be opposed to nearly any tax increase? Or you would consider, you'd consider any plan, but you don't know for sure whether or not you'd vote for it? The, a round of the surveys that we've done in the upper Midwest, the typical result is someplace around a quarter of the people saying they'd support nearly any tax increase and about a quarter saying they'd be against nearly any tax increase, about fifty percent in the middle. And that doesn't matter whether it's a fairly democratic school district or a fairly Republican school district. As you look at the results here, you see that more parents are saying they'd support nearly any than saying they'd be against nearly any. But we like to see the parents' numbers up at about the thirty-five percent level. Because again, remember, they're gonna lead the, the supporters. They are likely to drive you towards that sixty percent percentage much more easily. Among the non-parents, we're actually seeing pretty good numbers here. We would typically see a higher, a significantly higher percentage in that dark red area than you see in the dark green area. So I mean, there, there's some good news here about non-parents connecting with the need for a tax investment in your district. On the right side, we ask them for, okay, what's your tax tolerance? And I consider this to be, once again, some very good news, which is that you have forty-four percent of your parents saying they paid more than sixteen dollars a month. And thirty percent of your non-parents saying they pay that. Now remember, when you think about the right price point for a referendum, you're not looking at the average of your community, but rather you're looking for something that's acceptable to sixty percent of the population. Because I've yet to work in a school district that didn't have at least thirty percent of people voting no on a building plan. It's just, it's just naturally what's gonna happen. So you're trying to find a number that fits comfortably for the sixty percent. And it looks like you're well on the way to having, to being in a situation where both parents and a significant percentage of non-parents are gonna be willing to support a plan. Remember, we asked this question blindly. You'll be communicating based on what the value of the plan is, the benefits that you provide as well as the price point itself. So it's likely the price point starts to leak higher than it is from these survey results rather than lower. And then finally, we asked a question about the timing. Do you want to complete most of the repairs at the same time? Or do you say just prioritize health and safety now and come back and ask us in the future for another plan? Among parents, nearly sixty percent agreed we should complete most of the repairs at the same time. Among non-parents, half of them agreed with that. And notice that very few percent said, as a result of this question, we want no plan at all. That's good news. It tells me that they're listening and what they're trying to figure out is what's the right plan. But with the majority of people saying that they want it done what I would call the right way, which is don't go back and have to duplicate certain costs in three to five years. Do, do the investment now and, and when the cost will be as low as possible. They're really opening the door for you to step out and explain why you want to do more than maybe those four items that they consider to be the most important. So, just a few takeaways, please. The first is that this is just one set of benchmarks and, and I always try to caution especially school board members. You have election certificates, right? You have networks of constituents who you talk to regularly. You're gonna get other input into the process that you should consider just as much as you consider a survey with a self-selected sample. But I think the survey data helps, and in fact, I'd even suggest that if you make the decision to invest, to invest some time and energy in more communications and engagement, that maybe we go out, we do a follow-up survey in six weeks or so and, and learn how opinions may have changed. But certainly, don't use this as the only piece of information that you have. You, 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 you've got to use your instincts and you've got to use the conversations you're having. Also, remember that referendum planning is a journey. District residents don't seem quite ready yet, but there's plenty of good signs. And there was no guarantee that the moment you do the survey, they would be ready for the referendum to go out. And a reminder that, that sixty percent, I mean, that's a, I've always found it's harder to get from, from, from fifty to sixty than to just say from forty to fifty, which would be a more traditional election. So you want to make sure that people are ready to go when the referendum's on the ballot. So keep assessing those items that you can control, but also keep looking at outside factors and how they may be, maybe impacting the referendum. Finally, I'll tell you what the current risk is. And that is that opponents have challenged the quality of the plan, not the need. The best no strategy that's used in the upper Midwest is a strategy that doesn't attack the need or attack the school district, but rather simply says, you know what, I think there's a better plan out there. And, and what happens is that there, there's an organized campaign sometimes to ask a lot of questions about the plan and to make it seem like there's a level of uncertainty. And then with several weeks to go before the referendum election date actually happens, somebody, some people will say, you know what? Our problem isn't the schools trying to solve this. Our problem is it's just the wrong plan. So if we both know, we can all go back and, and start over and try to work on a plan together that the community will support. The only problem is in most districts I've worked with where I've seen that strategy be successful, when the time comes to go back and develop another plan, people don't show up to help out. It ends up being the same people that were there before. Fortunately, I think we've learned some ways in watching this strategy work in several districts, some ways of dealing with it that we can talk about as we get closer to the referendum. But the most important point here is that the data in the survey suggests that it's likely if we went out too quickly, the public would be open, your voters would be open to that strategy being successful. The strategy of let's take it back and find a better plan. So with that, I will, I'll stop sharing, be happy to, to answer any questions. If for any reason that the, the, the microphone, the electronics aren't working perfectly, I'll just ask someone to repeat it.
Great work.
I, I hope it helps and I hope it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't create pessimism. I hope what it creates is managed optimism.
So you mentioned potentially a follow-up survey in six weeks. And then presumably, there would be some steps that we would be taking between now and then for additional communication. And we, we had a little conversation about that at our earlier meeting this morning. One, one place that we felt we could maybe really target our parents, especially of our younger students, is around the time of the elementary Christmas music concert, which would be what, first or second Monday in December typically? That's a little more than six weeks away, isn't it? Not much though. Yeah, yeah, eight weeks. I would think we would need to make, make plans to have time for some impactful communication before that second a, a follow-up survey would be conducted.
And, and I, first of all, I like how you're thinking about this. Let's just, let's roll up our sleeves and let's step in and, and figure out how we start to close some of these gaps here. And when I say we could do a survey in six weeks, we could also do a survey in, you know, three months. It kind of depends when you feel comfortable that, that things may be changing in the community. I would suggest you think about communications two different ways. One path of communications is let's make sure we're communicating the need and the process we're using to develop a plan. Those are always the building blocks of proper referendum communication. So here's the need, here's the, 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 the process we're using, now give us feedback, tell us what you think. That's path one. Path two is just the ordinary decisions that you're making as a school board and as a district. You need to communicate well, so people get a feeling for the, for the ongoing issues that you're, that, that you're tackling and that you're making decisions that are generally in their best interest. You saw those three criteria. Because sometimes I think it's hard to drop a referendum in front of people and say, please, make a decision on this right now, when they really haven't grown comfortable with the decisions that have been made in, in, in recent months. And so if you think about it in terms of those two paths, it's not, it's not, neither one requires that intense of work, but it just requires is a pretty clear plan and always asking the question, okay, what do you think? What's your input? The more we're asking that, the more trust people gain in the decisions that are going forward.
Anything else? If not, thank you for your presentation. Can, can, will that be shared out with board members, the presentation, please?
I have it, I can, I'll get it home.
Okay. Anything else from you, Lori?
Uh, no, I'm gonna stay on as long as I can. I just, I'm actually at the hospital with my dad, so we're just kind of managing through some, some health issues. So I apologize that my camera's not on and, and maybe as it, but I'll stay on as long as I can, because I know you're talking about facility things, so as long as my name's up there, I can answer questions if they come up.
All right, thank you for being with us.
Yeah, and, yeah, yep, and thank you, Todd, for, for joining and presenting. Appreciate that.
You're, you're welcome.
All right, so that was ICS survey results and board members, you'll be getting that, that presentation for review. So backing up then to facilities updates, what have you for us there?
Okay, I thought you might want some more information, you know, as you start to make the decisions on the budget. So we got a quote back on the chiller. It's not one hundred percent set in stone and brand aggressively, but the, so the chiller with setup and the chiller is gonna be somewhere around four hundred thousand, give or take. At this time, we don't have the money to pay for that chiller and we don't really have the ability to go out and get a loan because our indebtedness would exceed five hundred thousand dollars. So that, just when, as you start to make your decisions on that. You know, about the plumbing break, we heard from Maverick. We, Lori's been doing, she's got some places that she can look or they just did, um, build somewhere, Lori, right? That they, they came in and they, you know, did the busting of the pipe where they go in and then, so Lori's got some ability to get some costs on that, so she's working on that end of it. But Maverick said, feels like we should just keep doing what we're doing until it has to be fixed.
See what happens. It's blowing now, it's working. You may as well just kind of roll with it until we have an issue and we don't know when that could be.
It'll be in February.
Yeah, and that's the thing, because it's going to be disruptive if, if something happens and Maverick didn't say it was gonna be expensive. He said it's going to be very expensive, is what is, what we got from him.
I think if it is seven feet down, and that's what he said it is, I don't remember it being that deep, but of course, get, get put, put a big, get a dig out. And he said, I kind of questioned how long he thought it would take as it just turned into a month. He goes, wow, if you're just gonna fix that, do a spot fix where it is broke, maybe a week, he's just kind of guessed. It's gotta be so bad. But my thoughts are you would want to replace, you want to first that, that whole line. I, I would to the, to the perimeter of the building, I guess it was a man.
And, and we don't have a cost estimate either on the focus job or the larger potential project to do. No, no, very expensive.
He's kind of a man of few words, and then when we got the invoice from him, he wrote on there, very, I mean, being, that one, expensive. So I don't, I think he's been more than fair to us, because I think he camered that area and it was three hundred dollars. I, I was expecting, I don't know, a large for the trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been great, been very fair to us, so. The elementary, remember, we got the elementary plumbing down there. We had a, Dave and I talked about this, we had a plug toilet the other day and of course, my mind right away goes through. And David, I don't know if David and Bobby were as worried as I was, but in my mind, I'm like, great, what is this indicating? But I think it was just a plug toilet, wasn't it? Oh, it's bad toilet sauce. Dave and I met with the tuck pointing guy, he came, we did a walk-around. He's waiting for a bid, but we're just not.
I don't understand. We met with that guy, and he was gonna get a quote. And that's been three minutes ago probably, and I've called him two or three times. And his secretary said she sent us a quote, which is color in yesterday, and I still haven't received one. But yesterday, But yesterday we had two of his men show up that wanted to look at the building and I couldn't be here. I was driving. Well, they're coming back at 11 today. They're working in town here somewhere. So it's gonna be, uh, and I don't know why, cause we already met with Scott. And Scott wasn't one of these two guys. They weren't, so I don't know if they wanna look at it again to work on their ass or whatever.
That's that he would supply us an overall cost estimate and then he would break it down into the size. So that we would have an idea of like, if we can budget for that, you know, coming up and the year after that. So just the bit for the tuck pointing, just remember about, we have a 65-year-old kitchen that has all of the original pieces in it. And, um, I don't remember the body who I was talking to yesterday about. I think it's been running fine, right? The walking cooler has, but there's no replacement parts for that, cause of the age of it. So if it breaks down.
This is a book.
Right? And, and I know you guys know this stuff, right? Um, and then the gym is gonna be about $40,000 to, we have the $3,000 fix for the bad flooring where the water came in and, and the rest of it. And we're working on fundraising for that. But those are just kinda some things that, you know, to keep in mind as you start to decide on your budget, which, and I don't know how much money we're gonna have. We have what in our building fund right now. You guys have the budget in front of you or, you know, where we're at. So, and anyway, those are just my facilities update, Bobby and Greg, or Dave, do you have anything else that you wanted to talk about facilities?
I did talk to Lee about that 260,000 dollars and I kinda told him that it was outrageous. So he is getting a different, uh, secretary, both from somebody else. So he said, uh, hopefully today, see a different number on that.
A little over 35,000. That's what we have left in our.
No, that was what we ended with.
Right. Is that the entire facility update?
Are you on Zoom meeting?
No.
You can either be on Zoom meeting or email it to me and I can share it, one or the other. That works best. Put it on his email about eight minutes. From over there.
The internet service there, uh, we're on, we're on item C now, 23, 24 budget. And we do, uh, well, okay, we do have to take action or non-action today would simply mean that we, we're accepting a preliminary budget as presented, but we're, but we're making a little, we have made a small, what, there's been one change, two changes. I'll let, I'll handle it. All right, reassuming, um, now we're on item C 23, 24 budget. Shannon, share with us the changes that you've made since preliminary.
All right. So on the income side of the general fund, I changed the, uh, transportation aid. We got the final number from, uh, DPI and it went from 214,889.76 to $170.90, 170.96.40 cents.
What was the first number? 175?
Two, two 14.
Oh, two 14, okay.
Almost two 15.
So it's a, a decline of and, and so we, we, we were just making an estimate previously and now we've received our actual number from the state.
Yes, cause it was going off the, so transportation is a year behind. And so that would have been the year before. And now they quit reimbursing for out of school district or open enrollment kids, and that's the difference.
That's a huge difference. Yeah, well, we, we have families that we're, we're seeing like 30 miles each day. And that's been going. Yeah, we haven't been doing. Do they love it? You know, let's say no.
The other, uh, change that I just made yesterday when I was, uh, reviewing this was in the Cheyenne Valley Special Education Tuition. That is line 59. So I had, um, we were given, um, an estimate of our overage on, uh, Cheyenne Valley of 284,000 some odd dollars. I rounded it up just as straight 285. And I took the number that was withheld from DPI. I had the prior year's number. Now, since they've given us our state aid in, in August, that number is 467,715.83. Added to the 285 overage comes up to 742,000 dollars. So it was an increase of about, I think it was $30,000 or something.
All right. Shannon, will you explain the difference between what you have in the 23, 24 budget? And if you look back at actuals for 22, 23, and I'm talking about the special ed. Go back, go back up there.
Okay, okay, okay.
Explain to us the difference be, because the number is astounding.
Yes.
Um, but tell us the difference between the 21, the 22, 23 actuals versus like 24.
Okay. So these numbers that are in 20, these three years, three prior years are Oaks Public Schools overages only to special ed. Because, uh, DPI takes off our cost to Cheyenne Valley out of our student aid payments. So these other three numbers are net, are just the overages. It never had the, the true amount of money that we paid to the Cheyenne Valley. Because if you go up here to the top, our state aid payments, these are going to be net of our, of Cheyenne Valley's numbers.
So up top, you have the net?
No, up top is the gross.
In 23, 24.
We don't, actually, that money never actually comes into our coffers.
Correct.
But, and it's very, I'm sorry, but it's very deceiving for somebody looking at that to see the huge difference in those numbers.
It is. And that's why I wanted to challenge to explain it. I like the way she's presenting it, but I want it to be clear that, that, that she, she is doing it differently than has been in previous years. I suppose we could go back for, for the budget that looks like this. We could go back and make that adjustment. So we're looking at apples to apples. But, um, truly, we don't get the money, but it's paid there on our behalf. It's paid Cheyenne Valley on our behalf.
But I want everyone to understand, it does not come in, that is not part of our income. When we're looking at our dollars to.
It's a part of our state aid that is directed elsewhere, but it's not part of our income.
It, it never hits the main.
Right. Well, and actually it's gonna be the same thing with S R C T C too, correct? Because that's.
No, because that's summer school.
Oh, nevermind, you have a summer school.
That summer school for education of the kids in summer school, that does come into our, um, as a part of our state or student aid. And then we have to pass it on to S R C T C.
Okay. So in that same token, what is the difference in our 23, 22, 23 actual? Why don't we have title five, three?
In the income?
Yeah. And in 23, 24, we do. Is that because they're all actually rolled into title one?
They, no, title one, it should be, uh, let's see, title one. What row are you on Sheila? There it is.
I don't have a number.
Oh, okay. 24, yep. Um, title one ish, ish, is only supposed to be what we're grants or DPI gives us for title one. The, the, the coding of the income, they usually just put everything in as, as other federal revenue. And I split it out so that I knew exactly what was left on my learning loss. What was the E-rate, the bus, um, we, title five.
So where are those grants in our 22, 23? That's probably trends.
Okay.
Where are they as revenue?
Yes, okay. Other restricted federal revenue will have, um, will have a lot of them. What's the federal type? Title two is really, is rolled into title five. So that's why I don't have a title two is because I have mine under, um, title five.
Okay. Question on the special reserve. We can always only transfer percent. It goes into the general fund and then we're transferring it to the building fund, but we do not have to transfer to the building fund. That can, could if we chose to stay in the general fund, right?
Another one that comes right up from payment aid is S E C.
Yep.
Was that interesting?
Yes, it is on my, uh, seek and cody. It's the very last one of 13,000 dollars.
All right. So I, I sent some questions to Shannon yesterday and she and I had discussions and included some of these topics we've discussed already. Um, and just, just to be clear, um, but we are, um, we are, we had proposed in our preliminary budget, uh, or preliminary levy, um, 70 mils for general, 20 mils for building, 12 mils for miscellaneous, which is new this year, first time we're asking for that, and three mils for special reserve. Total of 105, right? So we, given that there have been a couple of, are we approving, do we need to approve the budget? Or do we just need to approve the preliminary levy or what?
We would need to change, um, this budget as, with those two amendments that I did for the extent.
Okay. And then we can, and, and we could request to reduce our, our levy as well.
Yes.
Or not. I'm not, I'm just saying, I mean, we, we, we could, but we would also, if, if we were choosing to reduce our mill levy request, we would include that, we would now make that change in the budget and include that in our final budget. So we will need to act on the budget at the very least to accept the changes that Shannon has presented to us. In addition to that, we could ask to reduce the, the levies that we previously made. Or not. That's, that's what we need to decide. And this is our last opportunity to do so. No, wait, Memphis. We have another special meeting Monday. Thoughts? This, this budget is showing even with that 105 mils, that we will deficit spend this year by over half a million dollars. But of that half a million dollars, 409,000 of it is being moved to the building fund to cover in part of the science school projects.
Right. 409,000 is what is, is what is left on the bill to T F hours.
Oh, and that's how you arrived at that amount to transfer? Okay.
Yep.
And another point that Shannon and I discussed yesterday, and correct me if I've misinterpreted or misremembered. Notice last year, our ending fund went from 1,006,000 to 1.196 million. So our ending fund balance increased. But really the reason it did was because the half a million dollars of Esser money.
Right.
And we aren't getting that this year.
Carryover. Expected budget wise is not quite nice. Do that again. Our carryover then our expected ending general fund balance would be less than nine.
Even with this full mill levy that we're requesting. Is there anywhere? And I, I feel like it would be nickels and dimes, but is there anywhere that you can say, well, um, and we could shave off $10,000. Well, that's not much, but yeah.
So, um, this number, the, um, the property taxes, so if you go up to the general fund income, that is the total dollar amount times, uh, the 70 mils. I was instructed, I had been advised to take a 5%. There's a 5% leeway between those that don't pay at all and those that take the early payments or the early discounts. Um, so I, that's 5%, but, um, in, in going back and looking at the history of Oaks Public Schools, what we've levied and what we've collected, it's anywhere between one to 3%. So there might be some, some cushion here as in, I mean, in all the levies. Because I took that, that, uh, discount and delinquent number on all the levies. So there's the general fund, um, $3,500 in the special reserve. The same thing with the miscellaneous. So there might be some.
But so, a question I posed to Shannon yesterday, which I don't think she fully understood what I was asking, but of those Esser dollars that we spent, how much of that was put into new programs? Stuff just because we had the money to spend that we are now having to find money for in this budget? Anybody have a?
Like purchasing things that, um,
you know, like software or anything that we used Esser dollars for that we don't have the Esser dollars now, but it's still coming out of this budget.
We've kind of hold back on some of those, like Reagan, Jordan.
I remember hearing some of that.
Yeah. We went through, like you brought up software specifically, we, we, myself personally, I mean, I cut, I cut quite a bit off, but then I added some things. So I mean, it's without actually going through and looking again with a fine-tuned comb of, you know, with a fine-tuned comb, I, I don't, I don't know if I can answer that, but I feel like, to answer your question, I don't feel like we are, we are doing that. What you're specifically stating that we're, we're using general fund dollars to, to replace money that we got from COVID relief. I don't feel like that is currently taking place. I feel like everything we are using, everything we are paying for is is specifically needed for the education.
Well, I'm not saying it wasn't needed.
Right.
I'm just wondering if there was stuff that we did add that because we had the extra money.
Right.
You get what I'm saying?
I do, I do, and I, and I.
And I'm not saying it's not needed, that's just my question.
I'm thinking about like Odysseyware, like we don't have Odysseyware anymore.
That would be, that would be, yes.
Soon.
We have moved everybody, we are down to one license. Um, that we share that one. So I mean, there's things that over time it's like, okay, we just can't afford it. They were expensive programs that we couldn't afford to pay for anymore.
I remember in that technology meeting, you specifically said we gotta watch so that, you know, we can maintain. Yeah, so I was just wondering how well we did on that.
Yeah, so the computers in the laptops, the the last of the payment was made last year, so there isn't, you know, other than up upgrading or. Replacing broken. Pieces, those are paid for.
We're looking at some other things too, like your technology, um, Larry was talking about. Um, possibly we need iPads when we have to do our next purchase for the high school because they're finding that they're more and more user friendly with the keyboards, you know, just looking at some different options.
Closer to a laptop, they're much cheaper, so operating systems are virtually the same.
Take same, but you go away from Apple, that would cut our budget huge, huge.
It would also cut our usability.
I know.
Uh, Chen and I have a, so.
So we're down a teacher that we're gonna have to hire because. We're down an English teacher, right? Because is that in the budget for the year? Did we lose that?
Our down two.
Yeah, we're, and sorry, Spanish teacher, but you know, we. We're purchasing some other stuff with that money, but we are down.
Our Spanish teacher was also a little source of brother too, because we were charging other schools, so she was in heart pain for herself.
And we're looking at different options for that, so we're actually really down two teachers this year that we. More of the English, you know, but we really would like to hire that Spanish to offer some more stuff for us. Students, be it a business teacher, I mean, we're looking at different options, so.
You mean hire a position, not, not a Spanish teacher?
Right, yeah. So those FTEs that we just are doing without this year and um. We need those two FTEs back for the high school to be fully functioning to offer the things that we want to offer for them to do well.
I believe this budget, the high school number includes the uh, one FTE English teacher.
This budget includes it even though we're not paying it this year. So that's a piece of a question there as well. Not, not today, obviously, but you know, I think. As you grow in your position, Shannon, I think it would be nice to see a, like a. A, a draft budget two and one and two and three years out, just. Just to play with. I think that, I think I'm gonna add that to my business manager email. Online. Maybe that's where I got the idea. Okay, let's, let's go down to each one of those, um, each of the cells where you have a little flag and let's, and maybe go up in the top and start at the top and let's just review that again. Okay, that's how you got that number?
Yes, yes.
And is that, is that our, is that our taxable valuation or that, that's just a twenty five million?
That was, that was high, yeah.
Yes. Okay, there you go.
Twenty three, five, nine, seven.
Can you see them? No, it's not the one she sent us. Cause I know, no, drove me nuts last night, like I can't see anything.
How does she share it with you? Does she email you a document or does she share the live version?
She shared not the live version.
That's why you can't.
That's what I figured out, yeah. Which, you know, I get why she didn't share the live version.
She would be able to share a version that you can't edit.
That's the way she should.
Okay, so, but is it, like, when you get the email? Does it have an attachment?
Yes.
To the email?
No.
Or is it like a?
It's like she shared it, she shared an document for it comes and she'll leave.
Yeah.
You're not able to edit it. One point six five one eight two seven.
See it all?
You open it? It opens it with number seven.
Yes, it's mine.
Six fifty one.
Yeah.
Eight twenty seven.
Are you seeing it on your iPad? Are you gonna be out? Well, that might just be a stat on your iPad.
Well, I'm sure I know where. I just got a lot.
Yeah, it did, okay, so then, um, take that one.
Six point oh five.
Yep.
Eighty two thousand. Five ninety one. Thirty seven. And the twenty three five is correct?
Yes.
Okay, then take five eighty seven sixty eighty eight. Five eight seven sixty eight divided by, and what's our total expenses? Seven four. Four.
Nine.
Six, six five. Seven point nine percent. That would be a great uh, line to add is the percentage of your. Percentage ending fund divided by your general fund expenditures. Which, which I would argue too, though, and I've asked this question and and the answer I got, I don't remember who it was from, but. So here we're seeing right here in this screen. Of the four, of the seven point four million dollars of general fund expenses, four hundred and nine thousand of it is just transferred over to the building fund. So is technically is that?
And generally some items that is transferred to the activities.
Yes, and so are those, well, I can see the activities fund being a general fund expenditure, but is the. Should you really include the four hundred and nine thousand as part of the denominator?
I asked that question with a couple other and they said yes. And. I wanted to argue with them, but I.
Well.
We've got the income in there.
I suppose.
Well, I mean, but.
Then last year. All right, um, is anyone ready to make a motion with regards to the budgets? So we will have to embody the, the, the additional change we just made with to correct the. The local tax revenue with the corrected. Uh, taxable valuation. Is there any appetite to reduce any of the mills that we have already asked?
Things we really heard, so. Right, with what we're asking. And if there's any way we could even drop them a little bit, I think it would at least show that we're. Conscience of taxpayers.
Let's revisit what we were doing. We were looking at the, everything that you had notes on, um, oh. So we looked at the first one and we found we needed to make a change, so that the next one.
Um, that is two hundred dollars.
Let's, let's not worry about, oh, yeah, yeah, let's not worry, that's a tiny number.
Okay.
But yeah, let's go to the.
Uh, oh, that's just showing you the choice, the two grants that that encompass.
Okay.
Um, seven hundred and forty two, we've already talked about this to Cheyenne Valley.
And again, stop a moment, the, the. The in, uh, in the per pupil payment revenue. That four hundred and sixty seven thousand is included in there and it's deducted down here.
Yeah, and there might be some cushion in there because we kept it at our rate to happen last year, so there wouldn't be the shock for the schools of.
And there might be shock.
And there might, hopefully there's not, I mean, the budget was looking really good, so, um, but you just never know, right? What happens?
I, I would hope that there's some potential in the legislature to do, to provide some relief in special education expenditures, because we know we need to spend it. We need, we need to spend the money. But it's, it's a big burden. Okay, um.
This transportation budget, this number includes the buck that we have on order.
It'll get here.
There might be pushing in. There might be pushing in there too, because we've got a grant, you know, that VW grant applies that.
That, she's got that.
You do have that in there.
That's up above, yep.
It'll be. For that last space, I'm sorry.
Thank. Uh, this is the same thing, the seek and cognia comes out directly out of our DPI payment and it's included in the gross DPI number on the revenue side already. This one has our twenty three million, this one's calculated at the, the new number. And again, well, thirty five hundred dollars, there's this. Um, the same thing with the, uh, the miscellaneous funds.
Okay, yeah, let's look at miscellaneous, so that's, that would be the revenue with twelve mils.
Correct, and that's a five percent deduction. And then this is where I, we came up with the, the number, the bus, it didn't know where you wanted to put the bus, and so we left it in there. Uh, the east, whoops, the east entrance, um, do we have a, a number on that yet?
No, Bobby's working on that.
Oh.
Okay, so there's some things in there, like, so we've discovered that the bus. Is already in. The general fund.
Right.
And. Jim Flores forty thousand. But, but being offset hopefully by largely by fundraising. And what about the temporary chiller?
At that time, we didn't have a number, now we have four hundred thousand dollars.
So is this our cushion right here?
I really do. Okay.
Shannon had a good point, if we. Drop, if we want to drop, drop the special reserve because we only get half of it's used, right?
Right.
And I thought that was very. But I would like, if we could.
So if we drop the special reserve of the income of seventy or sixty. Seven sixty six thousand dollars. We can still take half of that at the end of the year if we want to, so it would be half of eighty nine thousand, so roughly forty two thousand ish dollars. We could still transfer into.
Right.
General fund at the end. Granted, that drops your special reserve down to forty two thousand ish dollars, but.
Okay, so here's a point. Wouldn't it, I mean, yes, I get it's a cushion that you don't have to spend, but you only ever get to spend half of it. What good does it honestly do you? It was, it was here when I got here. So, because the, the miscellaneous one makes more sense, you have to spend it in the same year, but you get to spend it. Yeah. You can spend it on anything, correct? Look at the restrictions.
So the other thing about the special reserve, some schools, it, it, the central code allows you, you can cap it. And I, I can't remember off the top, thirty five percent of the last year's. Was it, oh, it was mills. And so some schools I've heard, they get it capped and they continue to levy those three, those three mills. And then whatever is in excess of that calculation, they can dump into their general fund. But you don't get to do that until you get to that cap, so we're, we're a long ways from that. But that's why some schools.
But still, maybe. And they're always just getting in the bank.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a good use of taxpayer dollars.
Debbie Downer, just remember, I mean, we have a plumbing break.
All right.
Sorry. Well. We, you won't be able to purchase a chiller, this just won't be. We have to do tug pointing, there won't. You know, I mean, there's just things.
I was hoping we would have some.
I'm sorry.
I know you guys were trying. It is what it is.
Yeah, I'm. Just a reminder that Dave had said, we looked back and when they did the top part, and he's tried to explain it to me, what they've done, it was. Twenty, I, I believe it was all four sides, it was twenty seven thousand dollars, that was. It was pre-COVID. Yeah, that was there. I don't.
Yeah, I was on the board.
And I don't know what you're, and I don't know why, or I don't, I mean, it was just to make a routine.
Just a routine.
And I don't, I really never did.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined. To support giving up the special reserve levy. I'm not too, I, I mean, while I'd love to go further and reduce the miscellaneous. From what we originally proposed, um. I, I feel like looking at the, the, what the, the sort of earmarking for the miscellaneous dollars that I think. There are some things in there we clearly aren't going to do. But there's some needs that, absolute needs that might come up that we may very well need those out. So alternative, we have a plumbing. We don't have that miscellaneous fund, we go out for a loan on that, correct?
And um, our indebtedness is capped at five hundred thousand, and we remember we've already got some indebtedness with our two bonds.
So how much would that leave us?
Um, not much, because each bond, now, I, I believe our two payments are in the number of two hundred thousand dollars, so a hundred thousand dollars. This year, this coming July, a hundred thousand dollars.
So potentially we might even have to do that on top of. What we have here. If it happens like.
And I, I think that that plumbing could be an immediacy thing, right? Maybe, maybe nothing's gonna happen, maybe ten years down the road, whatever, but it's, it's an immediate fix or those bathrooms would have to be shut down, so people come to our school to do an activity. And um, there's, those bathrooms would have to be shut down. So that is an immediacy thing that would take place. The chiller, you know, we know where I'm at on the chiller, um, the tug pointing is. Let's start up the plumbing underneath the windows, you know, the things that. The plumbing piece is the thing that's that dark, scary unknown, we don't know. When it could door, it could be, you know, now that we know that they're the break there. But then, okay, the boiler. Sorry, I'm just.
Robin's gonna fundraise for that.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I was thinking about this last night, so this is just for one year. Um, granted, if we were, if there was ever a bond. You know, we would be looking at, and, and that's another year down the line, we could. You know, if we were going to have that bond, we might be able to drop the mills more. In, in the next year, and that's where the future budget would be kind of, well, for a lot of different reasons, but, but we'll have.
How are we gonna drop the mills down?
Well, if, if.
Don't have the bond payments. Oh, although I thought you meant the future problem, yeah, 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 we'll have. So we're down to two hundred, so we've got about two hundred thousand dollars left currently on the old bonds.
Correct.
So two one hundred thousand dollar payments. Since we, what I've known, because if we book our project and it passes, then the, there are the plumbing and, you know, those things would be. Wrapped in that.
Well, yeah. And then we could drop miscellaneous levels, because you would necessarily be funding. Being. Free.
Good discussion. Having motion. Motion's can always be defeated and removed. Promotion to approve the budget of the changes that Shannon made. We got. Changes.
Right.
Is that the same motion or? Um, I, I, I think we could embody it all in one motion. So approve the preliminary or approve the budget as presented as. Uh, as with the changes we've discussed today and. Do what with our levy? Our levies. I mean, the, if, if we were going to do nothing, to, if we don't propose to change the levies, I would say the motion would end at. I move to approve the budget. As with the changes we've discussed, period. Or I move to approve the budget with the changes we've discussed and, for example. Eliminate three mil special reserve levy. And. Nothing. And anything else, that's, that's my suggestion.
Sounds pretty quiet down there.
Yeah.
You, you, or five are doing fantastic.
All right.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the budget with the changes discussed today and decrease the special reserve mill levy from three mil to zero.
Monica Heinbach has moved to approve the budget with the changes we've discussed today and to reduce uh the special reserve levy to zero. Is there a second? Also, Rhonda Day's seconds. Discussion.
I'll just wait, but how much is the three mills value that?
Uh, the three mills are a uh gross of seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars and sixty cents.
And that is with the twenty three million, but what do, highlight your little old flag there.
Oh, this one?
Yep, the twenty three, that's the what we think the valuation is. That's not, I'm like, okay. Okay, um, good question. And so we won't be if if we adopt this, then we're not gonna be increasing the special reserve fund by any dollars and we can still take out half of this, which so up above.
Okay.
We're we're already embodying half of it being moved up above, right?
Yep, so we, I will take, I would take out uh transfer from the special reserve.
Well, we could, we could still do it, but just half of what's in there.
Correct.
Right, it would be.
But I have, I have this in here as the income and then I have it going out into the building fund.
So, I mean. It has no effect.
Right, so the seventy thousand is equivalent to thirty five thousand, right?
For us to use.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
We're losing thirty five by dropping most of the units, but pool is losing thirty five thousand dollars.
Which in the end looks better to the patrons.
Well, it's saving the taxpayers.
Yeah.
That's.
Yes, yeah.
And it's benefiting us physically to have.
It's a smarter use of our other.
Yes.
Correct, let me. Before we approve the budget, though, we should make that change for that building fund transfer because we can't transfer that one.
No, right.
Right now, yeah, why don't you do it? So go down and just switch, go to zero.
Oh, what's?
Or let's talk after the eighty nine.
Okay, special reserve. Okay, I didn't bring my phone, so I don't have a calculator.
We'll just put zero there because we're not gonna get any money in, right?
Correct.
And then the next one is zero. Okay, so then the transfer can be I don't, maybe. Oh, move your.
So that's being a three, three, seven, divided by two.
Where do you get that number?
Half of that.
Oh, the whole. Feels around.
Okay, so then forty four thousand, seven, ten, ninety, I'm up.
But just for, you know, let's just leave it in the general, but let's not do that.
Okay.
Let's not transfer it to the building, but let's leave it in the general.
Yeah, we can, we can.
We can decide later. Yeah, but for the budget, let's just think.
Okay, so transfer from.
It's gonna make it look much better.
And point ninety, that's going to change the income. Okay, then I'm going to not transfer it here. Transfer to the building fund will be zero for that amount.
And then go change your building.
Building fund. Bill. Transfer in. Oh, look at that. Transfer from general fund. We're gonna take that out.
Okay, because you had a formula and you. Okay. So did that change the ending building fund balance?
It should have.
It did.
I just.
Yeah, oh, let's see.
Yes.
It was that like one's number.
Two hundred and seventeen, I think.
Two fourteen. And that that could be easily used up in one or one one project, sewer project, easily, you know. All right, well, we'll be at ease for a moment. Well, okay, here's. All right, percentages are.
Yeah. Went off a little.
Six, three, two, three.
Do you want to?
Five, seven, three, five, one. Eight, eight, eight point six. Hold on. Well, and keeping in mind, you know, where we are with the miscellaneous, that that's kind of our new special reserve.
Yes, it's the one we can utilize.
Yes. So we have cushion in there. And.
What should our percentage be or what's?
Ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen.
So we're we're a little low, but I'll also remember what Shannon said. She's building in the five percent, a whole five percent for the to allow taxpayers. Every taxpayer uses the discount, but typically she looked back and it's one to three percent. So we we're feeling a little bit of cushion there. And I, you know, thinking, I as I told Shannon yesterday, I always remember Tom saying, well, I always just build in like about five or eight students less than what I think we're gonna have. That was kind of where he kept his cushion was the number of students. Well, it's this, this is, I I like this. I like um having that cushion. It's very transparent. We can see that she's deducting that, but you know what? We know probably gonna get money. It's never been like. Or, you know, the financial situation.
It's just a budget. I mean, any, and none of these numbers are gonna turn out to be exactly right, are they?
Well, this number, well.
Well, yeah, but we use, don't you, oh, no, because we're based on last year's numbers, right?
No, 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 that is now, this is new now, it's.
Okay, so.
I knew that one.
And so do, so but that's based on our ADM and do we report our ADM on the at the end of the year?
No, they actually already, they access that through power school and they, yeah.
So this will not change?
Um, it shouldn't, and if it would, hopefully it go up.
Because they'll check again.
Well.
I can't remember what.
But they do, I mean, they do check the ADM again, so if we lose students, it will go down.
But there's a cap on how much they'll lose. I've gotta look up those exact numbers. I'll do that, so I can give that to you, but. Or if we gain kids.
Well, we're just saying that that is not.
I, you burst my bubble.
All right, any additional discussion? Good discussion, everyone. I I guess I would just add that in my time on the board and in in looking at other school districts tax levies on our patrons, we have been we have been good to our taxpayers. Um, maybe that's a little bit to our detriment at this time because now we're looking at, and I, this is something that Craig used to point out to me, is it? Yeah, you know, because there were four years in a row where we kept our levy at the exact same dollars. Do you think, do you think any of our expenses increased? Probably. Um, he brought to my attention, he said, well, would it be better just instead of just leaving a plan at the twelve percent, just a little so that it's not like all of a sudden we have to go up a whole bunch? Well, now we're going up a bunch. Um, I think it's fair to say that we're we're going up to replace our monies that have gone for for certainly for a major uh school, well, for but for for just for our facilities uh for our for our form stabilization project as well as a very expensive uh sewer project two years ago. This is recovering dollars that that we have had to spend.
Just side note, that edumomics, their record figure, twenty percent.
I I'll put out too, something that went.
Word use, yeah.
When, yeah, and when Tom, when I first got on the board, Tom would be, you know, we kind of were using more like that twenty percent. And he said, you know, you don't need as much as we used to, like, because back in the nineties, the state didn't pay every month or every year. They didn't make the payments until late in the year. And there were literally times that the board had to go to the bank tomorrow to make payroll. And so now that the the money is coming in throughout the year, twenty percent isn't really needed as it would have been back then. But now, um, you know, under ten is not feeling real comfortable. So I think we in in adopting this budget, I think we still want to challenge and ask our administrators to do everything they can to keep the daylights that is um as close as they can. More discussion? Any more discussion? Please call me out.
Brian Sire. Sheila Vangel.
Yes.
Monica Heinbach.
Yeah.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
On the meal.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. For the good of the order, our next meeting is on October, what, next next Friday, a week from today. That's all we have, special meeting, so nothing more can come before the meeting and I adjourn at nine fifty nine.